All right, everyone, we'll go ahead and get started. Roll call, please, Mr. Check it.
Commissioner Chalay.
Here.
Commissioner Stringer.
Here.
Commissioner Knack.
Here.
Commissioner Whitehouse.
Here.
Commissioner McCaffrey. Chair Starter.
Here. Any additions or deletions from the agenda tonight? Mr. Bird.
No, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Bird. Anyone wish to speak on non-agenda items tonight? This will be your chance. Okay, I have a motion to approve the August and the September minutes.
I second.
Hey, roll call, please.
Commissioner Chalay.
Yes.
Commissioner Stringer.
Yes.
Commissioner Knack.
Yes.
Commissioner Whitehouse.
Yes.
Chair Starter.
Yes. Okay, we'll move on to new business. We've got staff presentations for two public hearings tonight, and I'll go ahead and turn it over, Mr. Bird, for those.
Thank you, Chairman Starter. Uh, Cody Bird, planning director. Is our microphone charged up over there? For the podium mic? Not sure it's picking up. Can you hear that in the back? Okay, perfect.
I was like, who's on that to tell you yes?
Well, from the, from the speakers in the back of the room, it wasn't fully charged when we got here, so we're hoping it makes it through. Um, so just a quick introduction here, um, as Chairman Starter alluded to, this first agenda item is a public hearing item. Uh, this public hearing is on legislative requirements for, uh, relating to electric vehicle charging permits and the review of those. Uh, we have talked about this, um, advance the slide. We've talked about this, um, at the last meeting or two, and the House Bill twenty-four eleven seventy-three was a legislative action taken that required us to do some things with the, the way in which electrical vehicle charging permits are reviewed. The reason was, there's a lot of municipalities in the state of Colorado, electric vehicle charging is becoming more and more popular, and there's not a clear process on how those have been administered across municipalities, so the state determined that they needed to provide uh, a model code for, this is the way in which you should review these with these minimum standards, so that applicants for those projects have a uh, an easier path for getting through local processes. The state gave us three options for how to do that. We could either adopt the model code as written by the Colorado Energy Office. We could adopt our own standards and requirements, or we could, uh, take the, the do nothing option, which is, we're good, we don't need to change anything. And we had presented information to the Planning Commission and the Board explaining that there's a lot of sections of the model code that make a lot of sense, but they don't fit the local context. So we pursued option two, which was to, uh, make it fit our code the way it needed to, to accomplish the local intent and still preserve those state requirements that we've, uh, been required to do. Um, so I mentioned going to the, uh, Planning Commission or this board previously, uh, and the Board of Trustees in August to present the basics. So I'm not gonna not cover all the same details that you've already heard in those prior, uh, presentations. Next slide. So a lot of the requirements that we're, uh, needing to meet for the state requirements regards the, the procedures for review. Um, there's requirements on minimum turnaround times. Requirements to notify an applicant for any decision that's been made within three business days. Um, we can accomplish those. We also, uh, include information regarding, uh, the local context for where these are allowed as a use by right. We, our staff does not recommend any conditional use approvals at this time because of that, that's a practice we've largely tried to move away from because it's hard to navigate. And this is all about consistency and clarity, so that conditional use process would make it less consistent and clear for approvals. Um, we do include in our local context, uh, where access, where electric vehicle charging is an accessory use, uh, makes some sense. Um, and then part two of this, once we get through all the code adoption portions of it with the Board of Trustees, staff will be generating a checklist or a guide that highlights, this is how you navigate these new procedures. That was another requirement of the state, and then we have to report out on applications received for the next year, which is a staff thing that we can handle. Next slide. So as we dive into the, uh, application procedures, the first real substantive matter that we wanted to bring up and what we recommended in the prior presentation um, was that the state feels that the more you can make these, um, types of charging for electric vehicles, um, a primary use, the easier it is for them to get through. Staff had recommended probably our commercial zone categories make the most sense to consider the primary, uh, charging sites. And so that was the approach that we kind of got the nod from the Planning Commission, the Board of Trustees, so that's what we drafted in your, in your code. Um, those primary site locations in the, um, C one, C three, uh, light industrial and industrial zone districts. Though any new primary site where that would be allowed would have to go through a process called site plan review. This planning commission is very familiar with that process because you review and approve those. So that was consistent already with that, or that planning commission process for primary uses, and so it made sense to us to keep that consistency. For, uh, for, um, accessory uses, we presented in Bill strongly that, that the electric vehicle charging should likely be an accessory use in all zone districts. Didn't want to preclude a business from being able to install them if that's what they want to do. It's not a requirement that they have to, but if they did want to, we didn't want to put it through a public hearing type of process or a public site plan review if it's literally just changing a parking space to an EV parking space. So that seemed to make sense for that, uh, accessory use and administrative approval. Um, one nuance that staff thought about as we were going through the model code that we didn't discuss in great detail at the, uh, presentation on this was at what point you add accessory, how many accessory charging stations can you add to a site before it does trigger some additional review? Um, and we landed on eight. Uh, that's a number referenced in the, uh, the model code as well as kind of a starting point. We thought that made sense for a local context. So if a grocery store or, um, a big box retailer someday came and wanted to add electric vehicle charging in their parking lot, limiting them to one or two may not make sense in that context. And if they've got a hundred parking spaces or even fifty parking spaces and they want to make eight of them EV, well, they're still providing off-street parking, they're still meeting the parking requirement. That doesn't really change the use of that site from a parking lot for a grocery store. So staff is recommending if there's eight or fewer, follow that administrative accessory use approval process. If it's more than eight, we've written that that starts to change the number of trips, the length of stay. They may not be coming to that site to go grocery shopping, and they may be using it just for the EV charging, and it might have other effects that we need to consider, so that puts it into a site plan review. Um, we've updated our application procedures to accomplish the timeline specified in the statute, including notifying applicants that a decision has been made. Um, the current code in our general procedures, uh, is written as ten days. Um, and for EV charging, it requires three days. We felt that was fair, that three days makes sense for all applications. If we know the decision that's been made, why would we not be able to notify the applicant that this decision's been made? So we just shortened that from pending free across the board for all application types, and that made sense to staff. Next slide. So here you can see what I was describing for the, um, the districts in which we're proposing. Obviously, the table of allowable uses is much longer, but we truncated that just for ease of looking at these particular, uh, code changes for EV charging sites. Uh, and you can see in this, we kind of group them under the automotive section and commercial uses. Um, and we identify EV charging primary, uh, as allowed in the C one, C three, LI and I districts. We did not include it in C two. C two is our downtown core commercial district. And because of existing lot sizes and parking patterns, um, it doesn't seem to make sense to make that a primary site. That means the only use on the site is an EV charging station, and that doesn't make sense for primary uses in our business sector. The businesses in the C two zone district would still be allowed to pursue adding an accessory charging permit or accessory charging station on their site through that administrative review process. We just are not allowing the primary sites where the only use is a charging station in C two. And then you can see the second row, EV charging accessory sites, um, were identified as a use by right in all zone districts, and then we have a section on accessory, um, EV that, um, uh, kind of clarifies some of the use parameters or use limitations, uh, for design of those sites. So the way we reached those conclusions, um, and some of the use specific standards that we've included here, um, we, so our staff went kind of in circles on this topic a few times, and what we really boiled it down to is, um, if we're talking about converting a parking space to an EV parking space, it's still a parking space. It still has the same dimensional requirements. A parking lot's a parking lot. If the screening is required, they have to provide the screening. It's not because it's an EV. It's because it's a parking lot that has these standards. So we really tried to view this in kind of, I think, in spirit of, in the spirit of the state code. Um, we don't want to make this harder or more complicated to roll these out. It needs to be a simple, straightforward process. So we aligned most of our recommendations with, we're still regulating a parking lot. If you happen to want to add EV to it, here's what you do, and you submit your site plan review if it's nine or more, or if it's a primary site, and they've still been following all the building code, electrical code requirements for the actual electric charging. Um, for accessory, one of the things that we talked a lot about was, um, the, the model code identifies, and we've included definitions for level one charging, level two charging in, in DCFC or direct current fast charging sites. Um, when we evaluated this, we were thinking about what would be the likelihood that someone would want to put a, a DCFC or fast charging site on a residential property to attract um, commercial uses to that site, which would be out of character with the residential neighborhood. So we thought long and hard about that. And the other day, what we concluded was our home occupation standards already exist, and we've added a prohibition in there that EV charging is a prohibited home occupation to prevent that. There might still be a level of enforcement if someone chooses to do it anyhow, and we have to come and take an enforcement path. But we would have the, the tools in the toolbox to address that if it became, uh, a possibility. Um, talking with some of the, uh, electric providers, um, we, we did consult with PBREA, uh, sorry, Prudential Valley Rural Electric Association and Excel Energy. Um, we also talked with, um, representatives of, representatives of the Colorado Energy Office. This was one of the questions that we asked them was, tell us more about these DCFC. And what we reached the conclusion from all of those sources was, these are not viable for residential uses. The cost of extending the power, installing those is twenty to thirty thousand dollars, and it's just not realistic that we're going to get those applications, but if we did, we have a, a tool in the toolbox to, uh, prohibit those if we need to, uh, as a home occupation. And again, reinforcement for accessory, apartment spaces still a parking space, so it's allowed all of our standard requirements for size, dimensions, location, driveways, things like that. That's one part of the code. Next slide. A couple of things that weren't on our radar initially, but we wanted to clarify on, um, a lot of our parking areas have lighting standards, and we have a standard in our, it was really intended for like fuel stations, um, think, uh, Maverick or Lopin Jug or now Sinclair. They have the canopy with the lighting underneath it, and that specifically is intended to be a higher level of illumination because you're parking there sometimes at night. You may not always be safe if someone is, they need to be able to see around them because they're getting out of the vehicle to operate the fuel pump and things of that nature. Um, so it does require a higher level of lighting. And we thought about that in this context. Do we want to require that if an EV charging station is proposing a, an overhead shelter canopy for weather protection? That lighting standard doesn't make sense to town staff. We reduced that, or we're recommending reducing that to a more residential setting, um, so that we don't over illuminate areas that may not need it. Um, but we did think about that and proposed some lighting, uh, suggestions for how to accomplish what we felt was the appropriate level of lighting for, uh, EV charging stations. If it's a full site plan review for a primary EV site, likely that higher level of illumination would make sense for that, for your primary use. There's also an element in here, um, that we, we took a, a long hard look at and we sought some outside feedback on it. Um, there's a state provision that says that if an EV charging port, um, is designed to meet ADA accessibility, but it's not restricted exclusively for ADA, so pause on that for a minute. We wrestled with this. The site might meet the accessibility requirements for slope, dimensions, accessible aisle, all those things, but it's not marked as ADA handicap parking only. If it's not required ADA parking and it's not marked as such, it can count as two parking spaces. Staff wrestled with this because we thought one parking space is one parking space. How could it possibly meet two? And so we sought that guidance. What we've concluded is it's really intended for on a development site, and our electric solar ready codes require EV ready parking spaces. If you're providing parking that meets ADA and EV, a developer could count that as meeting both of those requirements instead of having to double the number of parking spaces. It's not physically counting one parking space as two, it's allowing that parking space to be counted for either or or both. Hope that made some sense. To help meet the minimum parking counts. Um, but I covered home occupations and excluding EV charging sites from that list. Um, and this is an easy slide. These are the definitions that we've added, uh, to, uh, chapter fifteen, article nine, um, to help accomplish the intent behind all the changes and still make sense. So, next slide. In your packet, we've given you the, um, all of the information for the draft code with the red lines tracked, and then a clean copy of that code as well. Uh, so you can see what we're changing or what we're changing, as well as what it would look like when it's all adopted in this format. Um, staff's recommendation is to, uh, take a look at, uh, option, motion option number one, which is adopting the land use code, uh, amendments as written and ordering a recommendation to the Board of Trustees. Um, and so just, that's my presentation, and briefly on those next steps. Um, we'll ask for, um, ex parte communications, if any, we'll go over, uh, we'll invite public to speak if they want to speak. Um, after your deliberations, the planning commission's recommendation will be forwarded off to the Board of Trustees. We've advertised that hearing for October twenty-eighth, um, so we are on track for that process, uh, to proceed. So that was a lengthy, quick, uh, presentation, but I'll have to answer any questions, and Chairman Starter, um, as part of your next steps, if you would, ask for ex parte communications, uh, which are anything outside of public.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Bird. Um, we'll maybe stand for questions first. Does anybody have anything for staff?
I have a couple of questions.
I wrote them down. Um, my first question is, on the number of spaces and landing on eight and all of that, did you consider possibly doing that as a percentage rather than a hard number? Just thinking in terms of if you have twelve parking spaces and you want eight of them, and there's no re, re, review required. Not that it makes any sense, but sometimes people attempt to do things that don't make sense. But if, you know, at some point we see something where like, there's three hundred parking spaces, eight EV ones really aren't a lot, right? And so that's my question is, rather than a solid number, did you consider a percentage instead?
Yeah. Certainly appreciate the question. It is something that we thought about. The, um, what we landed on was the percentage basis for a parking lot with two parking spaces, and they wanted to make one EV. We probably wouldn't write a standard that says fifty percent. So that would be overly restrictive in that situation. And the other side of things, if there were a hundred or three hundred parking spaces, um, you know, twenty or thirty EV wouldn't be a very big percentage of that total, but twenty or thirty EV parking spaces would certainly be a dramatic change to how that land is being used. And so that's where we kind of recommended that path of, um, in Wellington, we don't have any hundred or three hundred yet parking lot spaces currently. We're more in the, I think Ridley's is probably our largest parking lot, um, presently, this off the top of my head, um, at under a hundred, and if we added eight or more EV parking spaces there, it would change the nature and feel of that parking lot, as well as remove some parking spaces from other uses there. So that's, that's where we decided to start with the recommendation, was more than eight feels like it warrants some additional level of review, and less than that feels like something that staff could handle administratively. That's how we reached the conclusion.
And so when it comes to a special review, would that then slow down the process for the applicant?
No, it'd be much quicker. We can do an administrative review on that in days, as opposed to scheduling a meeting, going through development review process and conducting a, a planning commission meeting. A, a typical site plan review with, uh, around a review or two, and then scheduling the meeting and, and meeting here. We estimate typically ninety days for a site plan review. Staff can go to the minimum of days.
Okay. And then what's a miscellaneous zone district? I know, that may sound stupid, I, but like I can't recollect what would be miscellaneous.
Yeah, miscellaneous zone district, I think in the table of allowable uses, we have categories for residential, commercial, industrial, and we have miscellaneous, which includes public. Um, that's, I think, where the miscellaneous was coming from, um, is in the headings versus grouping of zone districts by category or function, as opposed to a specific zone district.
Okay, and so then if somebody, if one of the uses was something that, um, maybe was public because it's owned by the town, right? And say we go to having an all-electric vehicle fleet, that would then prohibit the town from having a primary EV charging area because we don't allow it for miscellaneous uses.
Um, no, I, I, in the public district, I, I think, stop me if this isn't what you're asking, but, um, if the town wanted to provide a, an EV charging site for the public, parking lots as, as a primary use is already allowed in that public zone district, doesn't specify whether or not it's EV or not. So that would be the mechanism the town would look to if we wanted to provide an off-site, off-street parking lot with EV charging. It was already allowed as a use by right in that public zone district.
You could only have eight charging stations?
It doesn't limit it to eight, it just changes it from an administrative review to a site plan review process.
Understood. Okay, thank you.
And if I'll, I'll add to that question, just, you didn't ask the question, but it was something else we thought about that was related. If the town did choose to at some point in the future, um, it's not the recommendation currently, but if the town wanted to provide EV charging on public streets, that wouldn't be applicable because those zone districts are for off-street parking requirements. So the town could make any on-street parking facility EV if we chose to do so.
I have a couple of questions. Or, uh, how many, uh, EV permits do you typically see in a, a year? I mean, ten, five, one?
Typically zero. Um, we have, th- th- this is, was a struggle for staff as well because we just don't see a lot of these um, to have to go through this much effort to accommodate them. Um, but the, the EV charging, uh, stations at, um, it's now Maverick, um, are the, the only ones that we permitted in the last several years. Um, we just don't get a lot of those requests, at least for a commercial nature. Obviously, in-home or like private use in garages, we have, we have quite a few more of those, but those don't go through this process. Those, that's part of their building permit or electric permit.
Okay, okay, and the thing is, I think I talked to, uh, Cardy XL. I don't think to do a DCFC, that's three-phase. And my understanding is they will not push three-phase to a residential. They, they, it's just not a, they just won't provide it.
Or the resident isn't wanting to pay that much to get it there. That might be the other angle.
Hmm, yeah, I'm sure, that's, that's all I really add there. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Hey, any other clarifying questions from staff? Okay, before we open the public hearing portion, I'll go ahead and ask if anyone has any conflicts of interest to disclose, or if anyone has partaken in any ex parte communications, discussions outside of this planning commission with anybody involved in the process.
Yep.
None. Beautiful. Awesome, thank you all. Okay, well, with that, we will go ahead and formally open the public hearing portion. Um, Mr. Bird, I think you're good. Let's keep the podium free for Okay. Yep. This.
Forty, so Whitehouse, three nine twenty-two Grant Avenue, on page thirty-five sixty-seven, the last subject. You just brought up about, uh, yeah, okay, uh, one parking spot considered both ADA. An EV, is that only for the primary use and is that only for DCSE fast chargers? Because I think one of the reasons why they probably say it's okay to be used as two, because if you're using a DCSE charger, chances are you're not going to be parked there for more than fifteen minutes, maybe. I mean, unless you want to go to a hundred percent, in which case you're going to be traveling, you're going to want to max out your battery to a hundred percent. But most people that go to DCSE charges, chargers, they want to stop at about sixty, seventy percent because the charging slows way down in the last ten to twenty percent. And they get charged for that, you know, for sitting there idle. So maybe that's why they went okay with, you know, one parking spot above. I'm just asking for that clarification. Is that about primary and only use? Is that what that whole question is about, or is that also for?
I think, I understand the question. Any other comments?
Okay, may as well, may as well hop back up there and answer it.
Chairman Starter, I, I don't believe that there are any other public comments for this evening unless I'm mistaken. But if that is the case, and there's no additional public comments, you can close the hearing, and I can respond to all of them.
That'll work. Okay, we'll formally close, close of public hearing comments. And you may address Ms. Whitehouse's question.
Thank you, Chairman. Um, so as I understood the, the question from, from Mrs. Whitehouse, um, regarding the, the terminology for counting of parking spaces meeting both ADA accessibility and EV, the, the simple answer is no, it is not limited to primary or accessory. Um, it, it just simply identifies that if the primary, if the parking space meets ADA accessibility but is not exclusively restricted to ADA, that it can count as either or or both. So if you apply that a little bit, or if you explain that a little bit more, um, I like to use examples, so I'll use an example. If your parkings, if your parking lot has two required ADA parking spaces, and you've provided two ADA parking spaces, that meets the minimum ADA requirement, and they are restricted exclusively for ADA, those cannot count as EV charging stations also. If your parking lot has, it requires, same parking lot, requires two ADA, and you provide a third one that meets all the ADA accessibility requirements for slope, aisles, dimensions, everything else, but you don't put ADA only in front of it, anyone can park there. Whether it's an EV charging space or not. If you're not, as a business owner, exclusively required to limit it, and you're not enforcing it, anyone can park there. That's how we understood this, this legislation. And the reason I think it came up was overly interpreting, um, that you've provided an ADA space, it will only count as ADA, and development committee has said, well, I provided more than the necessary number of ADA spaces. Why can't I count some of them as both? So that's, hopefully that got to the heart of the question.
Can I ask a clarifying question?
You can.
Okay, so using your example, if you're required to have two ADAs, one of them cannot be both, is that correct?
It, it, it could be both, but you can't count it towards your minimum parking.
Right, so it would have to be an, an EV charging that's ADA only?
It, it could. You'd effectively be restricting the parking space twice.
Right. So you would literally have to be someone who's permitted to park in an ADA spot, who happens to have an EV vehicle in order to park in that spot.
Oh, okay, thank you.
But it would allow the developer to count it as meeting both requirements. So if we had a minimum number of EV and a minimum number of ADA, they would be accomplishing both with that parking space.
But then, if you had two people who needed ADA parking and one of, and they didn't have an EV vehicle, then they wouldn't be able to use that space, is that correct? No, I'm saying if they didn't have an EV veh- vehicle, is it EV only?
So, can we pause for a second? Because none of this affects the code changes that we drafted, just so you know. This was a, it's, it's a, a section of the state language that came up through this review because it's related to EV, but it doesn't actually affect any of the local codes that we're writing, which is just for kind of explanatory purposes as to why we are looking at this. It doesn't affect the minimum off-street parking requirement counts that we would otherwise be looking at in a site plan review. So no changes, a- and we can discuss it as much as we need to, but it's not going to affect the, the way we drafted the legislation.
Okay, so the, being able to count it twice isn't part of the land use code?
No, just in, it's in how we apply it when we're doing a review.
Okay, so it's
Please, the staff are going to know that this is, that we, we have to acknowledge that if someone comes in with a site plan review or an accessory EV for administrative review, we can't say you didn't meet the requirement because you haven't satisfied the ADA and the EV. Some of them may count as both, and we have to acknowledge that in the review. It doesn't change the It doesn't change the requirements, it's just how we review it when we look at it.
Okay. I guess I just want to make sure that if somebody's required to have two A D A parking lot, it's parking spaces, that they're meeting that requirement and one of those spaces isn't being restricted by E V. You know what I'm saying? So my question is, is if you had an A D A parking spot that was required and you added E V to it, does that then become something where you have to meet both conditions in order to use that space?
So if it's, if it's restricted for A D A, then a non-A D A user cannot park there.
Right, but if it's restricted to E V as well, then do you have to be an A D A and E V in order to use the space?
Yeah, my former statement was still true, if you're not A D A and it's restricted for A D A only, you cannot park there.
I'm asking the reverse side of that.
There's not a requirement for that. If you provide an E V charging space, the town is not restricting someone driving a diesel four-by-four pickup from parking there.
That's what I wanted to know, thank you.
It's not a, that's not a requirement that the town needs to enforce.
Okay, that's all I wanted to know.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, if there are no other clarifying questions, does anyone have a motion?
It's number one, yes.
That was the staff recommendation, correct?
Move to adopt the land use code amendments related to electric vehicle, E V charging sites, and forward a recommendation of approval to the Board of Trustees.
A second.
Perfect, roll call please, Mr. Checkett.
Yes.
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 Chair, Senator?
Yes. Okay, thank you, everyone, that is public hearing one of two. So we have another one of those, anybody need a break in between? Are you prepared to move on to the second one? Okay, cool, let's do the second one, thank you, Mr. Bird.
Thank you, Chairman. We're pulling up the second presentation here as we speak. Um, as alluded to, this is also a public hearing, so similar process. Um, I'll do a presentation, we'll ask for any uh conflicts or ex parte communications. Um, we'll open it up for public comments, um and then after we close the public comments, uh Planning Commission can deliberate. Um, some process, I, your recommendation with or without revisions will be passed along to the Board of Trustees for a public hearing advertised for October twenty-eight. So, in our slide presentation, um this next public hearing is on a state legislative requirement that requires local municipalities to adopt regulations prohibiting non-functional turf. Um, we gave a presentation on this in um September to the Planning Commission, um kind of highlighting what this means, so I I'm not including all of those same details here. I'm happy to answer those questions or or get into deeper details if we need to be. Um, but that was the presentation purpose, was to understand why we're doing this. Um, so it is a state requirement, uh, if we go to the next slide, please. Um, Senate Bill twenty-four dash zero zero five um required uh the prohibition on installation of non-functional turf, which has definitions attached with it. It also required the prohibition of non-functional artificial turf in new developments, um and redevelopments, and the new developments includes all new commercial, institutional, civic, public, street ride-away, um and included H O A common areas, those are the large open spaces for H O As. Um, the prohibitions have to be in effect by no later than January one of twenty-twenty-six, which is why we're bringing this TV here at the, at the end of the year. Subsequent to that Senate Bill twenty-four dash zero zero five being passed, the House uh Bill twenty-five dash one-one-one-three uh was also passed with some clarifications or modification language to that, um and it it expanded a little bit on some of the definitions. Um, and it expanded that the prohibition also includes uh residential properties that are developed for multifamily purposes with more than twelve dwelling units. Um, the Senate Bill twenty-four dash zero zero five specifically excluded residential. H B twenty-five one-one-one-three specifically includes multifamily with twelve or more. Um, and so that second one, H B twenty-five one-one-one-three, requires that multifamily housing be, that prohibition be adopted no later than January one of twenty-twenty-eight, which is a little bit further out. But in review of this, of these two uh legislative acts, um staff evaluated our existing requirements, and under our codes, a multifamily, uh a new multifamily development project would go through a process of site plan review. And our site plan review process currently refers those projects to our landscaping irrigation design manual, which already requires those uh multifamily units to have limitations on the amount of turf area on those projects, and the town adopted that a couple of years ago for water efficiency purposes. Um, and so as we reviewed this, it makes sense to town staff to go ahead and include that now, since the process of review would be similar in nature to what we already require. It's not really changing that uh in a dramatic way, and so getting those accomplished all at the same time makes sense for consistency, so we're not creating a new process for something that's excluded. Um, oh, sorry, go back to the last slide real quick. You might have gone there, perfect, thanks. Um, and so the other piece I'll touch on briefly in the explanation, um or really kind of suggesting we come back to it at a later date, um that H B twenty-five um one-one-one-three also requires the town adopt regulations that uh regulate the installation of turf on all residential properties. The intent behind that is to uh reduce irrigation water demand in a state that has water conservation needs. Uh, so, um, these are things that a lot of communities have already moved towards, but this is a legislative act that requires it for all real residential properties. Um, and so to to further implement that, we know that's got a little bit more nuance at a local level than just the state prohibits this, we don't have much of a choice there, we need to comply with that. The state doesn't define how we regulate that installation of turf on residential properties. So staff is recommending that a a more robust public engagement process, um and updates to our land use and irrigation design manual will be needed to uh to fully inform those decisions. And so we're recommending doing that in twenty-twenty-six or twenty-twenty-seven to be compliant with that, second part of that act. Next slide, please. Um, which, here's the overview of that timeline, uh a lot of it's what I've already explained, but our recommendations in the in the packet for you tonight include what staff feels would accomplish the prohibitions that are required to be done by the end of the year for uh new development and redevelopment projects for commercial, industrial, institutional, multifamily greater than twelve units, uh and including those street skirts and H O A common areas. Um, as I mentioned just a moment ago, twenty-twenty-six is when the town's going to be doing some larger efforts on the landscape irrigation design manual, um and discussing how to regulate installation of turf on residential properties. And we'll be using some other state-required components for updating our comprehensive plan for water supply elements, help inform those decisions as well. Um, so by end of twenty twenty-seven, we'll have had a more robust um process to inform those, and we'll be bringing that back for a public hearing later in twenty twenty-seven. So for your draft code amendments in your packet tonight, um we are including the language that prohibits the installation of non-functional turf and non-functional artificial turf um in those applicable areas, it does include streetscapes and parking lots. We have the existing codes or our existing landscape irrigation design manual already limit the the amount of turf area for these uh projects, and we are not recommending changing the percentages. Like, so we have um a limitation that for like a new commercial site, um thirty percent is limited to turf. We're not changing those, we're not recommending changing those percentages, but we are recommending that the, if they're installing that turf at thirty percent, if they're looking to use um the functional turf definition to install bluegrass or um functional artificial turf, that that, but the definition for functional is really the overriding principle there. It has to have purpose and meaning for sports play areas, high um picnic areas, high intensity use that needs that additional strong grasp for that level of activity. But we're not changing the current requirements on the areas. Um, we do propose updating language on prohibition. This prohibition also applies to invasive species, that definition exists in other Colorado revised statutes, and it was clarified by this series of legislative acts, um so we're updating that to mirror current language. We've included definitions for the terms that we're using or that are used in this um, these two house bills and Senate bills um to reflect those changes, and there's a number of places where um the way we've structured our current land use code, we have a section on landscaping for commercial, and a section for industrial, and a section for parks, and a section for these different typologies for landscapes. And rather than try to aggregate everything up at a high level and say this applies to everything, we've repeated that language in each section to make sure that it doesn't get overlooked or missed, to make sure we capture that intent. Um, and because of that change, you'll see in your packet, there's a lot of breaks where there's sections of code we're not touching. Um, the that style of formatting requires a lot of changes to punctuation, numerics, formatting, and so we've cleaned a lot of that up, we're not going to bring like one of those back and highlight them for you, but there's quite a bit of change in structures to make sure that it still reads as. So these are the definitions that we're including um from these legislative acts. Um, and I'll just highlight these quickly because I think it might help answer some of the questions that are likely to come up. Um, the definition for turf includes any dense vegetation with leaves and leaves um that were, when irrigated and mowed and clipped collectively creates this vegetative surface. The s- the House Bill twenty-five dash one-one-one-three clarified this definition a little bit. Um, or clarified the definitions for functional and non-functional. Um, it specifically added that low-water-use grass was not included in that definition for non-functional. And grasses that have been uh that are native or have been adapted to an arid environment also do not meet that definition for non-functional. This was really important in that second um legislative act to clarify that, um because there are a lot of um grasses that can be grown to establish a turf that are native grasses like bluegrama, it's a state grass in Colorado, it's not high-water use, it's perfectly acceptable landscape material, and the intent was to not prohibit something that naturally grows here. Um, same is true for um the demonstration garden in front of Municipal Services Building, the corner there. That's been uh planted with uh Sinodon, which is a uh dogtuff, it's a hybrid variety of African grasses and Bermuda grasses that collectively grows to be turf, but it is also hybridized to this arid environment and gets by with very low water use. So tho- those are really important to um note that in the second one, that those are not prohibited. Um, those definitions also do not, um a question came up earlier today about streetscapes and landscape street yards. These definitions do not preclude the ability to put landscaping in a street yard or a parking lot or these applicable areas. It's just, it's focused on the the non-functional turf components. Trees and shrubs are still allowed, mulch and landscape rocks are still allowed. Um, clump grasses um are still okay, and any of the a- adapted native or hybridized varieties of grass are still allowed in those areas. Um, functional grass is also allowed in those areas, um as long as it meets that definition in the state, that it's it's for the purpose of active play, recreation, and other things. I think the argument is that a streetscape or a parking lot, none of those functional uses are intended, so it's naturally going to be non-functional in those areas. But a bluegrass, a Sinodon, other other uh grasses could still be put in those circumstances. Um, and on artificial turf, um I'll highlight this one just real quickly while we're on the definitions. Um, the town staff identified uh functional artificial turf versus non-functional artificial turf, arguably the same context that if it's being installed with purpose, then it's still okay. If you're installing synthetic or or artificial turf in an area simply because I don't want to water that, and you're not meeting the functionality requirement, so you you're just saying, I'm I've got a large spot that I don't want to water, I'm just going to cover it with plastic and call it grass, that's still not okay, it still has to have that function to it. And our town staff was was very fortunate on the topic of synthetic and artificial turf that um representative of the Colorado Synthetic Turf Council reached out to us um and invited, uh, we staff invited them to attend tonight to help clarify these things. But one of the things that we agreed with um on this, not, or this um artificial synthetic turf topic was when done right, these can still be very attractive and useful areas. Um, it was not staff's intent and our code changes that we're recommending specifically do not prohibit artificial turf. But again, goes back to that definition of functional areas. Um, so synthetic lawns, synthetic turf, or artificial turf can still be installed in lawns, and we're not prohibiting that. It's just prohibited where it's non-functional, like parking lots and street skips. Um, that wouldn't, you wouldn't want us to install that there. Um, so that's my presentation coming to a close. Um, again, staff is recommending um adopting the the code amendments as presented in the packet. Um, and that's motion option number one, the Planning Commission's recommendation will get forwarded on to the Board of Trustees for October twenty-eight. Um, but if there are topics that you want to discuss, I'm happy to answer questions. As part of your deliberations, if you wanted to modify anything in this code, I can help you craft that, and we can revise the motion to reflect those changes. Happy to answer any questions.
I had a question, um. So in a residential area, you couldn't put in artificial grass, is that, because it's not for play area, so does that fall under the definition you don't want to maintain it or?
So for the the definitions, it it might fall in that category, but I'll be specific that the the applicable areas that these legislative acts apply to are for those, the commercial areas, the institutional, the streetscapes, parking lots. H O A common areas does not apply to residential real properties. The next round will. On, in the where the town, for twenty twenty-eight, the town has to adopt regulations for installation of turf on residential properties. That is not a topic that we came prepared to make decisions on tonight.
Okay, the other question is, uh, I mean, obviously this is a state mandate, but I mean, are other municipalities uh like Fort Collins, I mean, I certainly know places down in Nevada, you get uh paid a certain amount of money for every square foot of non-functional turf to take up. I mean, are other communities in the front range looking at that uh prior to the state taking action here that we are responding to?
I'm not sure I understand the the last part, that regarding the other communities that we're responding to.
Oh, no, I guess the, well, clearly we're responding to the state, uh, the house bills, right? But I just wondered, it was Fort Collins, any of the other communities, were they doing anything prior to sort of the mandate coming from the state levels, what I would, I was just trying to see what other community they're doing, or just curious if other people have already started thinking about this prior to, which is not what, I'm just more of a curiosity.
Yeah, no, thanks for clarifying, I, so I I understand that. Um, I I can say that there are communities all over the state and the nation that have gone to some of these kind of best practices. Um, even in, you know, a couple of years ago, when when the town of Wellington adopted our Waterwise Landscape Irrigation Design Manual, I I'm a firm believer that the the path that we were on there for our own local water conservation measures was a really great step, and it was really headed in the direction that these new legislative acts are going to. Um, when we presented the first draft of that, we recommended these different residential typologies for large lots, small lots, and the amount of appropriate area of turf or irrigated turf, we coined the term high-water use areas. That's essentially what this, these bills are getting to, is using appropriate landscaping materials for the type of application to, you know, reduce the amount of water demand. Most of our landscape irrigation design manual was moving in in this direction already. We did make the residential components um advisory or best practices as opposed to a requirement. This legislative act likely pushes us closer to, it'll have to be a requirement for new residential uh to meet that, or in some way regulated. Um, that's a broader policy question to discuss in the later date, but it, a lot of this is moving in this way. Um, and a lot of communities um across the front range and and in other parts of the state have programs in place for um rebate programs. If you remove uh high-water use or or heavily irrigated turf area. uh high-water use or, or heavily irrigated turf areas and replace it with uh low-water use, mulch, or other things, you can actually get repayment on some of those material costs. There's funding available at the state level for those um rebate-type programs. Wellington hasn't used them just yet, but it's on the radar and it's mostly a capacity issue for how many things we can take on at one time.
Okay, well, thank you very much, I have no further comments or questions.
One quick question. This applies to uh redevelopment of the commercial industrial and all that, can you kind of define for me what would fall under redevelopment versus just a new use or a new tenant or whatever, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, um, so the, the state, the, the, the two house bills that we're discussing tonight uh requires that any redevelopment project that's more than fifty percent of that project. So the state defines that threshold. Presently, I, I think fifty percent can mean a lot of things, I've wrestled with this in other communities. Is it fifty percent of the cost, is it fifty percent of the value, is it fifty percent of the land area? Um, we would be looking at, and for the purposes of water conservation, if you're modifying more than fifty percent of the landscape area, that's when that threshold would likely come into play.
Thank you.
Anything else for Mr. Bird? Okay, before we open the public hearing procedure, um, I'll ask the same questions, does anybody have any conflicts of interest to disclose or were engaged in any experte communications on this topic? And no, good work everyone. Okay, we will formally open the public hearing portion of this, um, if anyone wishes to approach the podium and speak, now is your chance.
Hello commissioners, um, my name's Eric O'Namanis, I work with the group. We represent the Synthetic Turf Council, it's a national group that represents builders and manufacturers, installers, and a variety of different things for artificial turf. Um, so we're just here to collaborate, educate, help you all with this, make sure that we're at the table and that there's no prohibitions or anything like that, we worked um hand-in-hand with the legislature on this um eleven thirteen, the like, you know, session this year. So we're comfortable with the language that's in that bill, um. Yeah, I'm just here to answer any questions, educate, help, collaborate, that's really all, I think we're not trying to push anything or anything that way, we're just here to help.
Okay, perfect, thank you. Yeah, just comments for public hearing for now, but that's great if you're engaged with staff. I think the next portion of the uh, of the residential section will probably be a little bit more geared towards you.
Yeah, we've been in communication with Mr. Bird and as you know, eleven thirteen doesn't touch residential, it tou- touches multifamily, but we'll work with them on that part.
Correct, awesome, great, thank you, thank you. Okay. No one else? Okay, we will close the public hearing portion. If, Mr. Bird, closing comments?
I don't have any closing comments, I think you guys, or can we move on to your deliberations?
I think so too, if nothing else for staff, anyone want to take a stab at the motion?
Um, I move to adopt the land use code amendments related to prohibiting certain landscaping practices and forward a recommendation of approval to the board of trustees.
Roll call please, Mr. Checket.
Yes.
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 Awesome, good deal, thank you everyone. Mr. Bird, get back to his other microphone. Any, uh, any communications from staff?
Um, yes, in your uh agenda packet, I put in the, the third, third quarter uh residential permit activity and lot inventory report. Um, you can see that uh we've had a, a few more residential permits issued in the summer months and we hope that that trend can continue. We are still below our projected numbers for this year. Um, but the economy such as it is, that's unlikely to change before year's end, so we're looking for a strong twenty twenty-six. Happy to answer any questions regarding the reports in your packet.
I did have one, I mean, again, looking, obviously the economy is part of it. It seems to be trending down, it seems that in the last few years sort of hit about, I don't know, eighty percent of what was projected, I mean, and then you see a pretty good jump in. Well, wasted too, but I, like, you see it go up to hundred ninety and twenty-six, is that based on you know, talking to developers like, oh, we're getting this ready and, you know, it takes a certain amount of time to get your infrastructure in? Is this sort of commitments, uh, you know, you might have, or discussions you've had with home builders, what their plans are for the coming years, is that where part of these numbers come from?
Yeah, and, and it's, it's kind of two parts, there's, there's a, a projected from a cost modeling standpoint and then there's a projected from a uh, I call it the, the pipeline, uh, the development pipeline in reality. Um, what we projected uh for the, some of those numbers was a straight line over many years, kind of from point A to point B in the town's future. Um, and that's what we use to help predict what, a kind of our, where the pulse typically ought to be. And we've seen a couple of down years, but we're going to see a couple of, of big years too, and so that's, that's a straight line projection, which is not indicative of any given year. What we do in, is for, for town budgeting purposes, when we're looking at the twenty twenty-six budget, we look at a very realistic, how many uh permits have infrastructure ready? What's the status of infrastructure on new per, on new subdivisions? And we update that number annually to reflect what we think is actually going to be coming in, in the next budget year, which is where we project revenues. So that's a two-part approach, one is the long-term straight line that accounts for highs and lows, and then we have the short-term, what's going to happen next year. And it's predicted to the best of our ability, knowing that uh my crystal ball is no better than anyone else's.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, any other questions on the housing report? Okay, if there is nothing else for staff, we are adjourned.